...against this line, this Kathy, this Massey, this Massey and this Nick. And with that, I will leave us in the invocation. Most precious, we have the fathers who come before you tonight, we ask for your guidance and direction. We ask that you be with us as we try to serve the citizens of Honey Grove, the citizens here. And we do the work, and we always remember that we need to work to you for God's direction. Other we know in many ways the time to give value, we ask that you forgive us. Other than that, we ask also that you be with those who are suffering illness, those who have lost their loved one, comfort them as only you are able to do. Those who are suffering illness, help them to be hoped to recover. Other be with the leaders of our country as they deal with various issues. Tonight, we ask that you deal with the hostages and their families, and that you deal with those whose family members are not coming home. Other, we thank you for the leadership, and we thank you for our leadership at our stage, and we thank you for the leadership at the city. These things we ask in last name. Tonight, we have a public hearing, Mr. Bartolome is here, and he is requesting a variance for lots three through ten, block ten, on Pacific Street. And what he would like to do is to modify the city's ordinance on a lot of debt signs from one twenty feet to one fifteen feet. So we're shorting in just a bit, and so we'll ask that Mr. Bartolome come forward and plead his case.
I can help you with that. I need to talk to these people right up here. They don't make any decisions. These people do.
Yes, sir. So, long story short, we have an ordinance that says that we've got to have a hundred and twenty foot. The lots that I currently own, playing built some houses on, are a hundred and fifteen feet. There's other houses in the community that set out the same. And all the other ordinances, the setbacks, the five foot, the houses, the square footage, everything that's important, with the exception of that five foot. So, basically, all those lots in line are a hundred and fifteen feet, including the house that's already there.
This property sits between Fifth Street and Prost Street, Applebee.
Yes, sir. It's right into the middle of the lot.
Yeah, down into the middle of the lot. And it looks like you're hoping to build, to break this into three lots and to build three homes now, ain't it?
Yes, sir. Originally, I don't know for the number, but I believe there was nine or ten individual lots that were maybe fifteen foot. So I had them surveyed and replotted into three lots that would fit much more than this was. And so we got everything set up, the houses set to the lots. It's everywhere, with the exception of the lot.
And I believe, based on your information, the lot square footage is correct. You're not asking for a variance on the lot size. It's just the depth of open at the back.
Correct. Yeah. The minimum, the minimums, all the minimums on your ordinances fit, just with the exception of the way it states that it has to be a hundred and twenty foot in depth. So square footage, the setbacks to the east and west, setbacks to the north and south, all can be obtained, I mean, referred well within those criterias of your ordinances. It's just getting it short from that five foot.
And it looks like you have a twenty-foot wide alleyway at the back behind those properties.
Yes, it's been abandoned. It's grown up. You know, there's nothing, nothing can be done at this point. There are, I mean, shows, there's sewer back there, water in the front, electric is in front and back. But that alleyway has long since been abandoned.
Mr. Massey, is this the line that runs from Fourteenth all the way over to Thirty-Fourth? Would that be the sewer line that goes through there?
This sewer line runs probably fifty down to the room about eight seconds.
Okay. Questions?
Partly, Ms. Bartolome, is because of the old railroad project that went through there, is that correct?
Uh, I don't believe so, because railroad is on the other side of the street. Uh, I have no idea. I mean, like I said, when I acquired these lots, you know, the best way to try it is to lose very narrow streets that I have no clue what anybody could ever do with them. And so I had my surveyor go in and survey, and I said, look, let's look at the ordinances, let's put it to what the city's been requiring. So we replotted it to where it did that. So we added those little pieces together to make it into three viable lots, the houses lot. But I don't know, I don't know if the railroad would have had an effect on the lots or not.
Questions?
Does everybody have houses, sorry?
Yeah.
Yeah, we're ready. They're just looking, oh, they're just trying to be sure that they've got the things. Do you also run the property that's east of your property?
No, no, sir, I don't. There's, there's one parcel of land that is between the road.
Yeah.
And in fact, originally, I reached out to the person that owned it because I was hoping to be able to give them enough as where as to put a lot into there and submit your requirements as well. And for me to do that, I wouldn't have been able to do three lots. And so unfortunately, I wasn't able to, I tried to order.
So if I'm understanding you correctly, you're just wanting to go, instead of us saying you have to have a hundred and twenty, you just want us to say it's okay to have a hundred and fifteen?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
It turns out like I was asking, can you be different, really?
Yep. The square footage is the same. It's just that the depth from the wall, or visually.
Unless we can expand into that alley, or if you can expand into that alley, you take a portion of that, five feet of that, that would be the only way to get around that. And, I mean, that's how we do it.
Well, there could be a sewer line through there, I'm not sure.
So we are, are, it's kind of a option.
Yep.
And your plan is to build on the site?
Yes, ma'am. There's three houses. Two are, we've got, I think, everything drawn up on that. Then the third is what we built.
I motion that we make a variance for lots three through ten, block ten, Pacific Street, to change the depth from one hundred and twenty feet to one hundred and fifteen feet.
We have a motion from this line that we approve this request for variance on lots three through ten, block ten, Pacific, modifying from one hundred and twenty feet of depth to one hundred and fifteen feet. We have a second from Mr. Moon. Is there any more discussion? If not, I'll offer a vote, although it's in favor. Mr. Moon, Boches, Mr. Massey, Boches, Miss Massey, Boches, Miss Lane, Boches, Miss Kathy, Boches. Uh, motion. Is there any, anyone in the audience who would like to speak on or against this at this point? It's kind of a, but if you have a point, one might.
Hey, I'm going to go ahead and put it. And I have lots wanted to, just to make sure, um, or, why? So if I was to be, I live here, but then, um, so I'd like to know, I want to make sure that it would be dead and not, because I get my house also serviced. So I just want you to make sure that it wasn't coming over into my property. And I went down there every day, and I had pictures, and I just want to see what it looked like.
Yes. Sure.
So, yes, so that, uh, it is, so you're, we didn't ask, you asked what, you, uh, eight and a half years ago. Yeah. Um, so basically, what it is, is from the street back to the alley, we, those lots are all a hundred and fifteen feet. And then there are multiple lots that we tie together. You and I talked about that before. Try to dig the nut and work with some over on yours, which will give you the width and the width to have, with ordinances basically set up. So the east and west setbacks are what the city tells you, you have to build inside your lawn area. So what the city ordinance says is that it's got to be from one hundred and twenty feet, they just moved it to one fifteen. So we don't have a hundred and feet in those lots, we don't have a hundred and fifteen. The ordinance says that we have a hundred and twenty to build. So what they just authorized us to do is to basically, or need to do, I mean, I think you have to do the same thing for us, go from one twenty to one fifteen.
The mine area?
Yes.
Yeah, that one, sir.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, just to make sure that everything was a walk and it wasn't frustrating to all of you.
Oh, no, no, yeah, no. And this, the city ordinance basically says that you have setbacks on the east and west of those property flats and flats, basically. So your bill offs are going to be eight feet from property lines. So you can't go with the eight feet, you probably, like, I can't, plus, so there's sixteen feet from the shrub.
What? That's not long enough. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right. We're going to move to the red or gentle. Yes, I need to adjourn. Yeah, I need to adjourn to the public hearing on this property and the hearing from the Board of Appeals on Central twelve against six fourteen. And we will open the record, City Councilman, at one forty seven fourteen.
Hold on.
I'm sorry, Eric. So is that, everybody's setback to one fifteen now?
No.
This is very important, right?
It is now six fifteen. We're opening the meeting. And again, call to order, we have this line, Mr. Cathy, Miss Massey, Mr. Massey, and Mr. Moon present. We have the forum. We have the invocation at the beginning of the meeting. That's where we will go to the public forum. And the public forum members of the public may speak on an agenda item during the public forum section of the meeting or as the time of the agenda items is called for discussion by the mayor. Speakers shall be given three minutes per speaker, members of the public mission to address the council, or non-agenda items may do so for three minutes, time limit for speaker. Consistent with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the council members cannot discuss non-agenda items. All speakers are expected to remain in the proper courtroom presenting and while in council chambers. Brett's personal insults and vulgar or plain language are strictly prohibited and may result in forfeiture of remaining time and possible removal from the meeting. Citizens wishing to comment must submit their request in writing to City Secretary in ten minutes. People, we have some folks who are on the agenda. We have tonight with us Mr. Keith Kevin Gutten and Miss Samantha Kathy, who are with my partner in our, and he wants to talk to us a little bit about the work that I am doing. I have attorneys who handle the tax sets. Mr. Gutten.
Good evening. Hi, Eric. I'm the gentleman at the council. My name's Kevin Gutten. Mr. Mayor said I got for you. Uh, Mayor, I'm the leader fellow who is also with party for your lecture team. Uh, and then Samantha Kathy, who y'all know. She's been on the round, and she's the one that basically does all the work. So I get to stand up here and talk to y'all and tell y'all about all the great things, I'll do it for y'all. I know I'm limited on time tonight, and I apologize for that, and I'm going to move pretty fast. I'm giving y'all each a comprehensive report that I have in front of me, along with my business card. Some of y'all I know, because I've been here before, I've been here back. Some of y'all I don't. On my business card is my cell phone number.
Yes.
This is one of nine counties that I work, so I'm nodding off very much up in my cars. You'll call that number, you will get me. I will ask you to call me home. I'm not, I'm not a call.
Mr. Gutten, I need you to rock you. Folks are at the back of the room with Luke downstairs, please. Thank you. I'm sorry.
I learned something in some of my life, I was on a forty event first trip, and in the middle of the senior getting, and I, there's three bars of coverage, and I actually want to do some of my clients who forgot that I was on vacation. So I will answer your call if you call me there night or eight, if I'm on vacation. I will answer your call. Your places, we, as, as Mayor said, we do your delinquent tax places and also your fines and fees collection. I'm not really hearing you talk about the fines and fees. I think everything's going great there. Uh, I ain't hearing big tax, and once again, everything's going great here also. Normally, when I give this presentation, it's a little bit longer, so I'll not be covered with the actual steps that we do. Just kind of direct your attention to a few things. One of the things I wanted to point out to you, uh, we had a good sale here. We sold a property held by Dianne Woodstein. The total sale of the property was twenty-four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. Y'all just get a percentage of that base from the pro rata share. The biggest thing I wanted to point out, do look on, uh, it's page five, is our top twenty-five delinquent accounts. And what we'll do, when we get the tax form, when we file it first, we'll put these delinquent accounts in orders, from top dollar down, because we want to concentrate on the properties that are going to make y'all a one twenty. You'll notice the top one, there's some work, work, I said, you got that paid after the suit was filed within the last tax year. That was a twenty thousand dollar hit for us. One of the things I wanted to point out to you, you'll notice in red, several of those stated hurdles on them. Just so you know, once a person is over sixty-five from this label, if they're planning to pay their taxes for whatever reason, they can go to the CAG and file for the hurdle. That means they don't have to pay their taxes. Now, the taxes will continue to accumulate, penalties and interest will continue to apply to it just at a lesser rate. When that hurdle is removed, and usually that's when a person passes away, unfortunately, the heirs have a hundred and eighty days to pay that reduced amount, whether that is, depending on how long they had to purr. If they pay within a hundred and eighty days, then they get free and clear at the reduced rate. If they don't pay within a hundred and eighty days, all the penalties and interest that would have been added to it had they not been purr, get added to it, and then it's turned over to us, like three hours. So it's not that you're not going to get these taxes. You just, we can't play them that. The law says, what's they call it, a hurdle, we have to cease and desist. All of our collection, as to that, we can't do mail letters. We can't proceed with a lawsuit that they have already filed. We have to stop. But you'll notice over here, I mean, we are actually pursuing these. Most of them, we have suits filed. We've got several of them that we've taken a judgment already. And people at the last sale, paying half the money in front, in comments, they could pay within next six months. If they don't pay, I think they've got a couple of months left. I'll say a couple. It may be hard. Couple of months in the new year, if they have to pay by March, we'll have that property back for the next sale. So, uh, we are really working hard. Several of them have been paid. One of the ones that's not reported in here that I did want to report to y'all, we filed in, on the dollar due, we filed a lawsuit in June of twenty twenty-four. We worked out an agreement, and we just not sued that in July of this year because they paid the top payment. And that resulted in thirty-two thousand, six hundred and seventy-two dollars to you. It was a total of a hundred and sixteen thousand in taxes due to all the taxing entities. But the city of Honey Grove got thirty-two thousand, almost thirty-three thousand resulted in that. The next page is page seven, is the status of accounts. And you can kind of look at that, and you can see that almost fourteen percent of y'all's delinquent bill or hurdles that we can't do anything with. You've got about eight point four three percent that's, we call it address research. What is happening on most is we've sent out letters. That's our main way of fact, and we send out forty-six letters a year, trying to get these people paid. And these are ones that have been returned to us because of bad addresses. And so we're having to do, skip tracing and try to locate these people. Uh, active collections, those are the ones usually that are, I'm going to pull a number out there. They're less than, say, less than five hundred dollars or less than two hundred and fifty dollars. And those are ones we're only going to mail. We call that active collections. It doesn't do us any good if we spend twelve hundred dollars to file a lawsuit on a person that can't afford to pay two hundred and fifty. So we're going to keep calling them, we're going to keep sending letters, but until it fills up to where we can file a lawsuit on it, it's going to be an active collection. And then you'll see that almost forty percent of y'all's delinquent bill is in a lawsuit already. One of the things I wanted to point out to y'all is, one of the great things about the city of Honey Grove, y'all don't have to really be a delinquent tax. If you'll look just briefly on page two, there's, we filed ten new lawsuits in the last year of election, and there's forty-three pending. So that's thirty-three pending lawsuits. And, and looking back at the status of accounts, thirty-three pending suits is forty percent of y'all's tax law. So you don't have a large delinquent tax law pending. We're doing very good collecting wise. I know there's certain properties y'all are interested in, and, uh, every one of those except for two, we have lawsuits filed, and they're pending, uh, hearing. There's two of them that have the hurdles, and then there's two that we initialized a lawsuit, which in our system, we initialize it, and it gathers that, but we get from the CAG. I don't know how, where, if y'all are aware about, but your CAG just went to a new software. And they're having issues getting that to sync with their old software to get the data correct. We're having issues with the new one getting it to sync with our software to get the data correct, so those are people. Now, I do want to point out to y'all, one of the things that we can do that could streamline this process, if you have a lot in particular that's less than an acre and it's been abandoned for five years, and there's at least three years' length of taxing. We can file a tax form on that property. That shortens the time. When you got a lawsuit, it's going to be anywhere from six months to a year, maybe even a year and a half, if it has to go over. A tax form, we can file that, send the thirty day notice, and we can put it on the next third. But it has to meet those, uh, it has to be abandoned for so long, and it has to have so many years to fight taxes. Now, there are some other things I don't know if y'all have, uh, do y'all do, like mowing lanes and those types of things? Helping safety lanes? If there's helping safety lanes, that shortens the time. Uh, I don't have that number right off the top of my head, but if y'all have filed a helping safety lane on a lot and it's behind in taxes, if y'all contact me, we'll look at it, ship this tenant for a tax form, and we can move it faster. Most of those lots are going to fall into less than five hundred dollar plans. Because they usually don't have lots, and they exist abandoned lots. So it's not something I can concentrate on unless you point it out to me. If you point it out to me, it's in your interest, it's in my interest. It moves up to the top of the, top of the line. But other than that, unless y'all have questions, and I know I'm probably a little over the three minutes, but...
Well, we, we'd allow a little more time, because we do get your attention. Thank you. Very much. We appreciate it.
I don't think I can ask a question, but maybe you can clarify the numbers on the litigation page, page two. Can you just tell me, is that for only the city and their part, or is that city, county, school on those dollar amounts?
Okay, so the dollar amounts, that's really good, base amount, O, toe, it, it does not include penalties and interest, so you will have a pro rata share of that place from your tax rate. All of that money is not due to the city. Is that?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Or is there any y'all who get T M L at the end of the month? Well, if you get an invitation, we should, our S P P will have a dinner here. We'd love to see you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Thanks for being here, this guy. Yes.
Just to clarify, on this, this is just to the city?
Oh, okay.
It's just to the city, the county, which you got, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that was good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And we appreciate being here so much.
We're going to go to the mayor and list all names to stay.
Uh, I'm going to stay as you want to. At this point, we have, uh, which is the consent agenda. You have council in your packets, the minutes, uh, city council workshop September the second, city council meeting of September nine, city council workshop September sixteenth, city council special meeting September twenty-third, and city council special meeting September thirtieth, and that was one correction night, but it's been made. And, um, you have your liabilities and dispossessions, the city secretary report, department, police department, utility department, and fire department. And unless there are specific questions about any of these particular items, I will attend a motion with the consent items.
Was that a direction on the meetings from the, not?
It was, uh, yeah, it, Miss Lane's name was left off the minutes.
The workshop.
And I think you can wait. All right? Any other items? I'll attend a motion.
I'll make a motion that we approve the consent items with the corrections to the minutes.
Same. Uh, okay, we have a motion from Miss Massey that we approve the consent items. A second from Mr. Kathy, hold on, they will raise your hand. Motion of various unanimous. At this point, unless the mayor and council request conditions, information only in the council happens, is there anything in the council at all? I would only say that David Prophet was a total success. I believe, we would respond most, uh, successful David Prophet's that we've had in a long, long time. It looks like everybody's had a wonderful time. So thanks to each of you that have had that and helped make it happen. And all of the folks who provided and making it successful. All right.
Fair. Uh, I would also like to say that there was a great turnout for the national, not out of the police department. Um, it seemed like that was a really good event, and I can't wait for the next one.
Thank you. Anything else? However, we're going to move to, uh, I want any of those that did, reviewing the bids, accusing of bid for one seventeen was specific. And the timeline, the deadline for submitting your bill was five o'clock today. And so I could only accept those that were submitted prior to that time and to that time. And we have some bids, uh, and I'm going to take that one over. Um, we have a bid from Mr. Carter Wallack for three thousand five hundred dollars. That's one bid. We have a bid from Mr. Adam, Adam Johnson. So I'll pronounce that. And we have a bid from Mr. Johnson, two thousand two hundred dollars. And we have a bid from Mr. James Carter for, um, let me see, we have a bid of two thousand eight hundred and seventy-six dollars. Two thousand two hundred. Two thousand and what's? Hmm, thirty-five hundred. So, which ones? Comments, questions? And, uh, council has coordinated at this point to accept a bid. And it doesn't necessarily, that is not necessarily a high speed, sometimes there are other factors involved. But it will be up to council to decide to accept it, accept the meaning.
The, the last two didn't specify their plans, correct?
Yeah. Yes, sir.
Was five B U listed in the posting?
Yes, it was.
Okay.
Yeah. Mr. Redd, would you like to report, Ross and Nick?
I'll make a motion that we go with, um, the thirty-five hundred dollar bid from Carter Wallack.
All right, we have the motion that we explore the thirty-five hundred dollar deal of Carter. I admit from Ms. Massey, there's a second, second from this line, any other discussion? I'll play some paper. Mr. Menon, Mr. Massey, Miss Massey, Mr. Kathy, oh, yes, so that's, thank you so much. And we can do this, and I'm going to, uh, I'm going to reverse the order of A and B, uh, because we have Mr. Jordan Roy here, who is, uh, from the structural engineer of Bureau Veritas that we asked to come and to assist and give us some feedback on the modern building. And he is with us, he's provided the report, uh, and so we'll reverse this order when we get that report prior to taking a piece of shit of the modern building. So, Mr. Redd.
I'm here.
We're here. Thank you.
Uh, yes, so I think y'all seen our board, they do have one yesterday, but, uh, we have a chance to look through it. Uh, I'd like to did special inspection and work of the school, uh, district. Uh, kind of a high level of it, and it's the entire interior is structural frame. It's just completely, you know, total, there's a lot of debris in there currently right now. Uh, it's good that it's all locked off and secure, so that nobody can, you know, it's kind of out for the safety ever right now on the interior. Uh, the system is that, uh, there's three exterior walls, the front wall, and the two main side walls are constructed of, uh, stone. And those, I believe, were salvageable, I think, you know, basically the next step would be one of the salvage buildings to clear out all the debris. And then it's just possible to get it dryed in, so we need really the, the floor frame completed, roof frame completed, the brace of walls, because right now they go up to twenty feet approximately. The pre-bead walls, they haven't had a lot of complexion, many loads or siding loads, which is good. So structurally, this community capital needs some repair and, and restoration. Like pointed up, some of them still are cracking and things like that. Uh, but I think a core of it and the historic asset to that can be salvaged. And then the interior can be rebuilt from either wood or steel and, um, whatever, where in the developing area, building it out, uh, with the most positive activity, the best management. Uh, yeah, my assessment is that the entire interior is done, the story got handled, and be restored and maintained. And that whole interior can be rebuilt.
Questions?
The entire interior, including the part that we've already?
Raising. Uh, yeah, yeah, so there's a raising, like, I guess, the first half of it, you still access the second floor out there. But there's just so much damage, water damage, especially inside, it's been raised, but I think it should all be cleared out, everything, so the primary stone walls.
Other questions?
Do you have a recommendation or can you provide a recommendation?
Uh, or what?
To restore or demolish?
Uh, so, I mean, my recommendation, I guess I basically said you can restore it. Uh, you know, you can, you can always launch it. But I think that, I guess, in my opinion, I think it's a viable guarantee to restore it. Obviously, it's a historic building, it's been there quite a while. I really think, I don't know if you guys have any, when exactly it built, I found some old maps from eighteen eighty-six, happened a little while. And I thought that was interesting, but I couldn't find anything from the county or from that, it's a exact date, it's a, so it's really, could be cool building, hardly down, structures. Uh, and so, you know, if it were, my recommendation would say, you know, restoring and keeping it throughout.
Other questions? Your, your report, I'm reading it, it seems fairly thorough. And it seemed to me that you gave both sides a point of what would have to happen. Uh, someone were to try to fix something with it, that there were recommendations in there, that had to happen. One being immediately trying to get it dry.
Yeah.
And, uh, so, um, I probably, it looks like it, it's hard to make a recommendation, uh, because you, when you're making a recommendation, you don't know who might come forward and say, well, I've been spending money to fix it. Uh, we know from the city's standpoint, what it's probably going to cost us to take it down. Um, yeah. Um, but sure, I thought your report was pretty good, and I'm glad.
Yeah, it just was the longest phase, you know, exposed, even more weather, that's something to get, the weather thing. Uh, just not having any racing, kind of added, but, uh, but yeah, I think if you just went, went short it and tried it, it's a possibility. Go a long way to the restoration side of it, you know, the price of it. It'd be incentive to do, to stay alive, in condition, and excel at that time, if I'm just sorry. Assuming you have that possibility, but, uh, but yeah, your reports, I'll make that one, because I'm all should give this. Just too much to be, uh, it's not good.
Anything else? All right, we appreciate you coming and that was so much. All right. Now we will move, we'll move to, uh, D, which is nine D. And we have, I guess, we have all three partners who are here to not, uh, miss, uh, to vote there. Is that close enough? Pretty close. Well, I wanted to come and make it French, devotee, parade, or everything. And then Mr. Soffe and, uh, Mr. Johnson are here. So who is, who is on your side, please? Yeah, we, we have your, we have your proposal, and I'll just quickly say that this, these individuals have created a new, redeveloped, a new foundation company that they're referring to as H G R Company for short. And they're interested in modern building. And, uh, let me just go ahead and say this, so that, uh, the audience can hear this, I'm not sure they'll be able to hear it kind of from here. Um, what they're proposing, I believe, if I'm correct, is that the city sign up this building to be screwed for a dollar. And gives you some guidelines and direction about a year, give you a year to get it dry, get, get the basic stuff handled that needs to be done to get it on the first stages of getting it going, is that kind of what it's on?
That's just a, a dry, uh, dry in the city.
Yeah. In terms of, in terms of what you just spoke from the structural engineer, does that persuade you?
You'll have to get me, I didn't understand most of what, uh, what's hearing or what's being said back there, but, um, it sounded something like, it needs to be mostly rebuilt from the inside. And, uh, you know, I'd, I'd have to defer to an engineering team of our own, but, um, I feel pretty confident that uh, it could be, uh, a combination of both, where there is some, uh, solid structural integrity on the walls, uh, the interior walls that we could work with and take out and reinforce the walls that need to be removed and reinforced. Uh, and be happy to defer on our engineering team on that, but, uh, my, you know, I, I would not be able to tear out every piece of wood in that building and reinstall it. Wouldn't be something that would be a feasible option, if that's what was being said, and I'm not going to care.
Let, let me just ask him, uh, one person who spoke to me was concerned about the next door building. Um, what considerations in terms of doing what you would do would need to, uh, kind of relieve some of the issues that are happening from that, from the modern building over to the next building?
I would say that's a label another issue, um, that building is leaking from the outside on that side of the building. So, uh, we would do, we would dry out the building on our end, but we wouldn't do any work on the next building. So it still need to be, uh, fixed, uh, done, uh, booted through, uh, or detached, we have, uh, it's, uh, pieces of that.
Uh, let me ask you, in terms of this year that we're talking about, my assumption is that there would be a period, that there would be some sort of reports periodic, you know, progress is being made and what's happening in there. And I guess a concern that I would have that's, if we were to do this moving forward, um, if at some, if, if it seems to be at some point, we'd have, again, an engineer could come and give us some sort of feedback as to whether the building is beginning to be structurally sound and if some of the issues are being addressed. Uh, I think one of the major issues that we've struggled with previous to this has been that proposals that have come forward have been, have involved the city putting out funds. And this is not what you're asking at this point, if I'm understanding correct, uh, and the city have really come to a place where we're unwilling, we're unwilling to spend others, although, you know, that, um, if the building is torn down, ultimately, it's going to fall, and the city will do it, and so.
We, if, you know, y'all, the only one get the building in a stamp of approval from an engineering firm, that the work we, the work we do is sound. I, I think that's reasonable. Uh, if, if we were, if y'all were in any way able to help rebuild a building, you do that if you're an engineering firm, you know, and you let them, you know, furverse and make sure it's something that we simply do, then we'd be open to that. Otherwise, they could, they'd be happy to, to provide a stamp, uh, an engineer's stamp saying the building is structurally sound. And it's good, and means that we can control, as opposed to just like, else they have an opinion and need to work the cost.
Yes, sir.
I, I just wanted to add, uh, you know, I'm one of the partners, uh.
Can you, can you state your name for the audience?
I'm Adam Johnson, uh, one of the three partners in the Bureau of Redevelopment Foundation Company. I'm also actually a fellow here. Uh, I've been, I was first got involved with it because of my engineering background. I actually was able to hear the Bureau of Veritas and the year said, uh, drive pretty much exactly what I personally feel about the building, that the interior is basically damaged beyond use and needs to be replaced, that the structural walls, the outside walls, visually, uh, even without testing, it's, uh, visually appear to be, you know, sound condition, which is very encouraging. It's me just sitting there on side, and I can hear, so I can hear there, uh, was, was exactly what I think the building has, is encouraging, is along the lines of what we hope to achieve and what we want to achieve. Also, as you mentioned, uh, if we are given the opportunity to restore and save the modern building, it would be like our updates and the year from, uh, the progress reports of how the project is coming along, what we expect. But again, also, again, what the, as you already said, the first step is, if the building dry in, get the walls short after the safe, and then move forward from there. And, you know, historically, as you know, the team here has tried to work with the city on ways to get funding from the city. Uh, we reached the point where we felt like the city did not have that capability, which is why we're making the offer to basically take the financial burden on ourselves, uh, and give ourselves a year to get the ability to go and work it safe. It doesn't need the fences around it to be able to top it on people. And then move forward from there, uh, mutation of the project in line with kinds of stuff that you've seen our team do in this town already.
Uh, same full transparency, we'd have to raise some money to do it, though, so, uh, we'd need every bit of a year at least. And it would start right away on making improvements. Start with safety and, uh, some aesthetic to what we have the budget to do right away. Temporary dry in on the existing, uh, structure, so we can stop all the rain before it enters the building right now. Uh, but we wouldn't be able to rip off the whole roof tomorrow and have it re-refine in three weeks, plus we got the funds to do so.
So, Adam, um, whenever you started talking, you said that you agreed with what the structural engineers had from Bureau Veritas, correct?
Yes.
Were you present whenever the? Were you present whenever the first phase was completed with Mr. Saba?
I was not, I've seen what he's done, but he did that before I was ready.
So you would agree that the interior that's already been done would have to be ripped out as long as the stone was stabilized?
The, that amount of infrastructure, I, I believe visually like the things again, I haven't had any testing of whether there was computer beams or columns or didn't have actually have flexibility to remain. Uh, I wouldn't be surprised if that were the case, but what's more important aspect for me is agreeing with the stone structure, which is what needs to be saved. That historic building is officially given, uh, and re-realized.
And then, um, Mr. Saba, you said that, um, you would have to do some fundraising and get the money from different areas to be able to do this. But you have given us a specific timeframe of a year or less. So if we were to agree to deed the property over to you for a dollar and you weren't able to get that money within the year, then we're back to square one, correct?
That's correct. Whatever we had done, whatever improvements we would do, if we didn't meet the standards of dry and safe, then y'all inherit those improvements. Uh, and I, I'm going to record the same, I do not agree that the shoring of that we did has to be combined. I would, I would see.
So, so what has changed from the very first proposal that you guys presented to us to the second one to, I'm not sure if there was a third or if this is the third?
Y'all have an exception. Where, what has changed since the first?
Actually, before, I'll let these speak, but I want to mention on the getting back to square one issue. Uh, we are aware historically that there have been similar regions, including rain from Markon building that did not make progress. Uh, we know that, but we also believe that as a team of people who are invested in this town, that we, we are becoming part of this beauty. We own land in this town of our own. We did specifically Jeff's project that you guys have noticed even before and after what is turning, uh, what our call looks like. Uh, we feel the difference here is that there's track record of your success in doing this kind of project. We'd be able to take that into consideration. We understand that now all we're first to say, we're going to do our best. We can't make it on, but there's a guarantee that we're going to get there. But we feel that if anybody's going to, we are here with the right team for this job. Sorry to interrupt.
Um, I need to ask something to say about what's changed.
Speak into the mic. I know you're challenged, very, very bit.
The only thing that has changed is, well, nothing's changed, but we feel so strongly that keeping the streetscape intact. Keeping the historical facade of that building so important to square and to the deep. Uh, that although, a month ago, two months ago, when you said that we would not want to take on the liability and try to dry in. It's first uh, steps to make it structurally sound and dry in. We've since tried raising capital for some other projects. And so we started to discuss, well, could we raise capital? Uh, I think we feel we could. But like I said, it, it will be a challenge. We don't have anything that is, um, you know, solid right now. We'll do what we can with our budget as our budget will have us as quickly as we can. But we, we feel that any funds are going towards this, it should be towards saving it and saving for the historical aspect and saving the street, the streetscape that, uh, we've been inside. And so that's kind of what's changed is basically, do you think we should raise funds to do it if we're then?
Well, let me, let me, let me try to, okay, so your proposal is essentially that the city kind of built up you. And signed up for you for a dollar. That you would essentially get it dry, with I guess windows and trying, whatever that means, or at least closing them off.
I don't think we could afford to.
Yeah. So, so are you dependent upon others funding to, to do that all that? And, and you're not looking to the city for that funding?
We would, you gladly accept funding, any help the city could afford this evening and if it was in the way of loans, we can get it dry and, and dry in and earn the money back. Pay it back to the city, we'd be open to that as well. We, we're going to have to do a fundraising campaign to, to get the building saved.
I'd, I'd like to add that we are already fundraising for the various projects that we prefer to be in actual call you. Uh, we've been adding, uh, the answer for those call you, but we three have agreed amongst ourselves that should be in the Markon building, not to be primary number one. Often renting will be directed for the Markon until it reaches a point where it's ready for, to be saved. And then we can move on to the other projects. So this, this project has become, even before we had it, we will get it, and as you know, our number priority is for the company to reach the money.
If we were to agree to this, would y'all agree to not sell it for profit within a set amount of time?
Do we not intend to sell it for a buck in a set amount of time, do you think?
I don't know, I just don't want to sell it to y'all for a buck and then y'all flip it over before you have it all done and make a profit off of it.
How about we would agree not to sell it before we had it saved and dry? That would be.
I, I don't want to speak for my partner, but to be honest, I don't have everything to sell.
I don't make any of this, but you know, there may be something in control.
You, I do, can I understand the anxiety and uh, concern that the council is expressing because we've, we've been down this road. There's two other individuals who essentially allow the ability to fall into the status of here that the consent at this point, the last one really resulted in our having to deal with it legally. Uh, and getting it back to the city. Uh, and I, I agree, uh, you know, if the city were to make an agreement, of course, we would strike out some sort of agreement. That allows you in this period of time to try to do what you say you think you can do. And if that isn't happening, which can make the city, now my assumption is that if we were to sign this over to you, that you would then become liable for the building itself. The city would for that period of time give up the liability associated with the building.
Absolutely, but if they're.
Oh, can I ask something else? Okay, so if, I understand that you're saying that there are some issues with the building adjacent to it, um, existing issues. Uh, once you guys start moving everything and shoring everything up, what type of insurance are you going to have that is going to, like, if something does happen further to the building next door? Um, what type of insurance are you guys going to have that's going to cover that?
If the building itself is completely uninsurable and it's unviable in, in the situation that this has. Uh, my company carries general liability insurance, so they'd be obligated to represent me if, uh, or even if we guys do because of something that happened with my company. So that if H G R R were to hire, if you have a choice to do the work, then there would be that layer of general liability insurance. I think that's as far as we can get insured. Uh, there's no way to insure the property itself.
How quickly would you, I know you have to fundraise, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but to get it dried in and get it safe? I think that's everybody's concern, or one of them. How soon would we see progress on that?
I think we would start the campaign within seven days, seven to ten days hopefully. And we, it would be, we go for all hands on deck, community coming together. If we put something online over trying to raise money, everybody can repost it, get, you know, get behind this together. And see how quickly we can raise the money, but right now, you know, I don't, I don't, seeing, I'm still working on my building. And every week when I make whatever I make with my construction company, every extra dollar I go to do it right now, so I don't, I don't have funds to start anything. Other than the base exploratory pressures we're dealing with that and seeing what we need to do to make sure we don't throw good money after that. Uh, you know, uh, if, if I, you know, I don't want to speak for that in this space, but I have an opinion that you can't tear out every part of that building. And it would be a waste of money to do so. There is a lot of structural elements in that building. The only reason the building is still standing is because of the stuff inside it. The, the rods that are going, clearly one side of the building to the other, holding it together. And all of the truss that are still intact that we resupplied, that part of the building is solid. Uh, the rest of the stuff that our engineer looked at, it's, we look at it from the back and it looks like it's falling in, that part hasn't come out. We need to, we need to restabilize it as we take that stuff out. All that's going to take money as soon as, so it would be the first step we would do as soon as we raise the money would be to start re-supporting that wall that's just holding it so up. And then go to work from there on drying it all in and making it solid.
At, at what point is the building insurable? Is it dry in, is it?
If you can get a shell dried in where water can't get inside it, then we, we should go get some element of insurance. Learning a lot about the old building insurance right now, everything is A C P, actual cash value to replacement value. And it means that there's no good insurance for getting these buildings. Everything that you have to pay about sixty-five percent depreciated on the purchase, so you're paying a hundred percent of the value in. And if something does happen, you're only getting thirty-five percent of the value back after a year ago.
I did, I just want to add a couple things, uh, to brand new, you know, we, all three of us just talked, talked earlier about the timeline and thinking this is very good. Uh, we've had some optimistic discussions of that, but we, we elected to ask for a year to make sure that we, to give a safe timeline. We didn't want to be like, oh, we'll do it three months. And then do like, we were over optimistic about that. So we, we put a conservative timeline in, we hope and expect to be there sooner than a year, or twenty weeks, give ourselves a safe timeline. Um, funny to, uh, maybe create the type of, uh, we're definitely sympathetic to the anxiety of what is happening before with this building. We mentioned that in our proposal to you, we've seen that, we know it happened. Um, this is why we are coming out as a team, team of people that we feel are right sorts of professionals to get this done. Uh, you know, engineer, builder, and interior designer, you know, again, not we did it, but we're, we walk into a room and we feel like we bring something that, to me, I'll be honest, I, I did it in the past. Where the proposals in the past have evolved, but I don't think it was that. And I'm not also think it was people that have demonstrated an investment in this town. Uh, and just been here two and a half, three years working on this project. You know, I've rented an office as, as an engineer and been running a business here for over a year now. Uh, this is six months in, this guy's project going on in this town. We are not here to sweep through town and flip things, year to year, be part of this town. I was actually listening very closely to the proposal about the, your fifty people that are part of the client. I'm going to be in that boat a few years soon, I've already filled out the lots that I've purchased. These are, these are things that I, I feel are, are books on paper. And, you know, we, we're good, the council will hear that.
Other questions, yes?
I will say it's a best possible to see to date. Um, and I don't know, but why not benefit the council to have quarterly, have it rolling down quarterly so we can say, okay, these are the stages that we plan to do then. The just three months, have that enough fundraising at a minimum that it mitigates the city's liability for a year. Uh, so, but maybe if they roll it down by quarter and so we plan to have this one by this time period, this one by that time period, would that make anybody feel better about the proposal?
I, I think it makes me feel better. I'm not sure that if we deed them the property, that we can hold them accountable for coming in every three months, we can ask them to. Um, but I think once we deed it to them, it's, it's their responsibility.
What about, what are your beliefs? I don't think we can do that.
I don't feel comfortable with that, I don't think that mitigates our liability.
That's true.
Yeah. Are, are we on solid ground, Mr. Hamilton, in this direction? Since you're with us.
Maybe, maybe, there, there, there are many parts to this puzzle that have to be figured out. Uh, not only switches, each other, hurting the interest, probably the craft death, what are the triggers, what are the timelines? How does it happen and who gets to decide? So that's, that's a significant issue. They probably need ownership interest in it to do what they're going to do. So that's, that's a problem. Uh, do we need to get beds? Maybe, I don't think so because of the very nature of this. So there, there are many, many, many parts.
When you guys want, I'd like to add in response to the, the timelines and projections. I believe I'm correct in this understanding that if the council's nine votes for this is a deal that they'd like to move forward with. There still needs to be a contract in place, a negotiation in place. And with the understanding that if we don't reach an agreement, it's amenable to all of the, even if tonight doesn't make it happen. Uh, we recognize, and what we expect is that if the vote tonight is to move forward with the deal, then the negotiations, negotiation begin. What is written in the deed of sale is, you know, what quarterly timeline, what annual timeline, et cetera. And I believe I'm correct that that would be the way, perhaps, which may also be comments on that, but right now, nothing that you vote on tonight finalized contract. It just expresses the intent to move forward with the idea.
Yeah. Other comments and questions? What's your pleasure? I'm not sure that tonight we're ready to really make a decision, probably it sounds like, are we? No?
I mean, do we have to make a motion to take no action?
Thank you.
Do we need to make a motion to take no action?
You have a question, Mary?
I have a question actually, so if, if we don't move forward with this proposal and there's no money to tear it down, then what happens? It just continues to all part of it have trouble fall down on the sidewalk and it's maybe it's get worse and worse and worse. I mean, what's, what's the, what's the other option?
What is it?
Oh, great. So, I don't know, I guess that's not, it's going to work, but I don't even have the answers to that. But I would just like to bring that up, that what is, what is the other option? If, I mean, it's me, you may as well let us try.
Yeah.
Passionate about it, we are taking funds that we could potentially use from other projects and any funds we get, I just have to go directly to the market to make it dry and save. That would be first priority.
And it immediately puts it on the tax roll once it's dated to them. And gets it out of our line, correct? I mean, it's not worth anything, but.
Well, it is, I mean.
Do you have something on that? I saw your face, do you have something to add to that?
Well, because of the tax rolls, what? It's going to get taxed, how much money does the city get, all of that, if you divide it up? And I hear there's a lot, there are actually, it's like, it's gotten on the tax roll for decades. We've already got the money in the, the city has already put money, I know quite, quite a bit of it, the attorney's fees on this thing. So you already have money in it. Question is, is it a tight hand? I mean, you still buy a ticket to it or what, what do you have to do with it? That's the issue. And maybe you need to have that, a small meeting with your lawyer on some advice in the back room here, executive session, before you decide much with it.
I think some folks have questions, maybe is that appropriate?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Avery.
Uh, me, as a pro, I can be the officer for you guys, hey, I'm the officer for office and company. Um, that's very good for yourself, I'm really interested in this. Uh, may we all invest in this property? Uh, maybe all investors in property here, talent as well, services to grow and acquire and grow.
Sir?
Um, so my final question, um, as I said earlier, this is, this is interesting. I love this. Um, so my apartment, and I've been a partner of yours for forever, I love this town. And one thing you notice about apartments, you look at that downtown area and you go, I love that, man, that's awesome. And you just literally feel alive in this town, a hundred and fifty years ago. And then you see this building, middle apartments, like that stands out. And so the only thing I can say is, whatever decision you all made, there's no question of your passion. But keep in mind, if you make a void there, there's a void there on our script. Something's got to go back to this, and you can't recreate that art from front of us. They're part of it, you can't. So they want it hard, because a hole is going to be there forever, or somebody's going to put something in. So we'll have to do a lot of sense of, you understand that? That's part of this, kind of, that's just.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I just want to, oh man, we don't have any money to deal with. If we're raising taxes because of our sewer lines, we don't even need to worry about that. Give, give them the building, they want to fix it. If they don't fix it in a year, where do we go? Absolutely none. Just, just give them, I'll, I'll pay you, I'll give you that, that all for myself.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I don't think we're approached to have, we have to amend it, talking about tours. We still have heavy inspection, we still have infrastructure, integrity, the vibrational. Tonight, there was someone who said, if you'd like to be taken over, and I said, yeah, I have to pay for it. Now that they own it, and that's the issue that you're saying, is if you own it, now they got a pocket of fees to do certain particular things. The other thing is now you are owning electrical. And again, in the state of Texas, it, it, what makes it entirely sound? It looks like a con, it looks like square. Okay, this isn't killing, this is sitting. If it has a ceiling, if it has a roof, then it's a building, it's a square floor. So that's, uh, I'm just trying to bring that to this. Just because you're not, that doesn't mean that they have to be rolling. That's what I really did.
Can I make a motion to go into second session?
They, they, they will, that's, that's the whole thing.
What do you say?
They will be required to, to say, there's no guarantee that I can see here, you know, assuming they're going to raise the money. Uh, there's no guarantee of that. I mean, there's still a lot of questions here for me to answer, in my opinion, but.
I would say, Peter's got more easy quarters, uh, transferring this tiny business to stuff on?
I'm going to call executive session at this point. Uh, I think we probably need to have a conversation about what you're sharing with us. Go ahead and share yours, and then I'm going to call executive session.
Okay, uh, on our big projects, we have to post bonds sometimes to make sure that we're looking to flee the project or our bonding company is going to be responsible. Also, uh, Ms. Lane brought the, well, what will yourself profit? Well, that can be written in the contract, no assignment of the title, no sales for five, ten years after that point, okay? So you put your money into it, they carry it, fine, let them do it. Uh, Texas, in our country, once you get it dry in, roof all that thing, windows, they will give you, uh, coverage on that. So that's not an issue. We've got the building, that look worse than that, than once we got dry, roof and windows covered. Uh, also, uh, for X number of years, that the city could offer, and a bait of taxes, just the city portion of that tax for one, five, ten years on that building. You're going to take care of the high sword on this square for that.
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much. All right, I'm going to, the city behind the road is not routinely listed as executive session, et cetera. However, um, consistent with the authority below the city mayor, return to executive session, as authorized by Texas government code, section five hundred and one oh seven, one consultation with the attorney. Uh, and so I'll ask for a motion for the executive session.
A motion that we go into executive session?
We have a motion from Ms. Lane, and we go to executive session, we have a second. We have a second, from Ms. Massey, uh, all in favor, Rachel, right here. Motion at ready. Motion is, you have it, we're going to executive session at seven sixteen. Thank you. Do, close executive session and reopen our regular meeting.
A motion to close executive session and reopen the regular?
We have a motion from Ms. Lane that we return to regular meeting, we have a second.
Second?
Second, yeah, all in favor, Rachel, right here, motion, here it is. Regarding an issue that we are discussing, uh, is there a motion or other discussion, um, this matter?
I... We are willing to take it under consideration, what has been presented to us by HGR Code. With the understanding that you guys have the documentation prepared by an attorney. And bring it back to us, to have Mr. Hamilton review it, and then we can make a decision after that.
Sorry. That sounds very good, good question made, uh, on time, ma'am. Would that mean, once we have it drafted, there could be a special council meeting before the next month just happens, or are we getting that kind of thing?
We're, we're, uh, right now, we're thinking, probably the next meeting that you had it ready by then and got it back to us, then we would, uh, consider it, we would do it. Yeah. We do, we just believe that it would be incumbent upon individuals who are trying to take this building, take it over, and that, uh, you should bear the expense of putting together the documentation rather than the city assembling that. And so, um, certainly, if you can put something together, get your attorney to draw it out, and Mr. Hamilton will look it over. And clearly, if you all have it done before that next meeting, and you get it to the city, and people get it to Mr. Hamilton, and he'll have an opportunity to look at it prior to meeting.
Okay. Uh, you're not bold to say, was there a consensus of feeling, or is there a tendency more there? Can't be sure. But if, if it just seems to be amenable, legal documentation, the council, uh, gives your advice.
You're asking a question they can't answer.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
You bet.
Right, I need a motion to take.
A motion that we table the discussion of the Markham building being transferred over to HGR Code.
We have a motion, Ms. Lane, to table it, set it up for the next meeting, uh, it's through the second. Second from Mr. Massey, all in favor, right here. Motion, here it is, in advance. All right, that brings us to, uh, C Hidden Grove Development Request for Modification of Water and Sewer Base. Uh, the Matthew Peterson, Clay Peterson, who is associated with, you know, Hidden Grove Development, PHC Development, Hidden Grove.
How are you guys? Hi, I'm here again.
Good to see you again. Let me, let me just say this, before you begin. Uh, when, uh, when, uh, Hidden Grove was being developed and plans moved late and all that, it happened that I was on the council. Uh, and there are some who would say I've been here forever, never done a thing, but that's not true, but I have been here when that was happening. And in the process of drawing up the agreements that were made, uh, Hidden Grove did, they installed a water line from Hidden Grove into the edge of town. And the sewer, one on one side, one on the other. And in that, there was an agreement with the city at that time that any, uh, anybody who tied into that water line, sewer line, would play a pro-rata amount for that. That was the agreement. Uh, and, um, the reality is that since that time, we've only got one, uh, business tie in to that line.
For, for thirty-seven dollars, I think. Because what, what do we got that from? Yes.
There you go, go.
Yes, and so, uh, uh, water and sewer fees by cities are typically charged with the intention of paying back the bond funds that were used to build the, the, the infrastructure and pay the ongoing payments and things. And so, we, we paid, uh, about like a million dollars for the water and sewer into the, there and paid for the ongoing maintenance and upkeep and, and electricity for the pump station, everything else. We acknowledge that the city does have some, uh, costs, uh, for water, very little, but you've got to have some cost for, for your charging of the pumps and send water out there. And we have, uh, some cost for sewer, for, for, that sort of treat, uh, that, that we pump that too. But the majority of the, the fees that you normally collect for water and sewer to pay back the bonds that install, construct, the first question. And so, uh, we've paid those fees in full, just like everybody else for the past five and a half years now, just with the anticipation, we were probably going to have that in the pro-rata, which is looking less at last, like we might give, basically, for that current timeframe that we're, we have that. And so, uh, with the dramatic increase in the property taxes and now the increases in the water and everything, it's, uh, raised our cost between twenty and twenty-five percent per occupant at our RV park. And that's, I mean, neither one of the owners at our, at our RV park have taken one dollar out of the project. And, and, and that's fine with us, because we deal with a long-term investment. But now, this position with the extra hundred dollars per space, that's going to put us in a position where we're not not even paying our bills, we're, we're actually, we would be losing money every month. And so, we want the request at this time, not for complete waiver fees on water and sewer, but a reduction in fees of water and sewer that are commensurate with what it's actually costing the city. Without having had to install any infrastructure, if that makes sense. And so, what we are requesting is that we pay the base minimum commercial rate of twenty-six fifty per water meter per month. Which would, you know, cover any minor costs that the city has for meter reading and things like that. And then go ahead and pay the base cost of five dollars for the house and gallon of water, I mean, for all water use. And to give you an idea, just based on my last month's bill, even with this lower fee, I'd still have paid two thousand dollars for my water and sewer bill last month. So this is a waiver, it's a reduction in fees that is intended to try to help us, uh, keep our heads off of water until, uh, it runs off, somebody else developing in town, breaks out, we can have a break above that breaking. And so, we would appreciate your, your consideration, having this, uh, reduction there, just based on the fact that I think we're probably the only, uh, business in town that's, that's been paying the same for water and sewer rates as everybody else, even though we put in all the infrastructure.
Questions, comments? And I will, I believe that you're also asking that this be, uh, for seven or eight pounds, you're here?
Yes, uh, definitely, it's just a, a pro-rata period, I mean, I, I can't ask for it indefinitely, but, but it would, it would help us at least to fill, fill that pro-rata period.
Comments, questions, feedback?
Charles, do you know off the top of your head what the commercial base rate is?
No.
I was thinking it was more.
It's in the, it's in the document.
I was thinking it was more than that, though.
No, the, the.
Residential.
Says for commercial customers inside city with, for city of Honey Grove, the base rate. Let's see, uh, twenty-six fifty minimum per month for active water usage.
That's residential.
Hmm? That's, that's residential, I thought.
Oh, twenty-seven fifty.
Twenty-seven fifty, okay.
So I, I misstated that.
No, that's, that's okay, I just wanted to confirm that.
Yeah.
With any other, in larger cities that have the, the Peds, when a development comes in, that's part of it, that they agree to, is that they take on that infrastructure themselves? Which is basically what you guys have done.
That typically, when we take on that, it, the, the, the pro-rata is virtually guaranteed, and it's, it's kind of set at the forehand. Our pro-rata is just, uh, with the decline, hoping that something will come in during the meantime, it's highly doubtful that.
The, the, the thought, I think, when all that happened, is that there would be businesses that would be building, uh, not only on the property in front of, the, uh, RV park, but down the properties that have been on the market from time to time now. I'm not sure whether those properties are still on the market or not, but, but I know they go on the market and come along, and it just happened to happen.
And, and based on this too, even if, because we, we, we have to plan on these, our facility, and so, even if we max out the development for the water lines we put in, we might get four or five hundred thousand dollars, four point five hundred back in. So we're, we're about to make the plus, no matter what.
What was that?
Now, it's twenty-eight, ever three, the sewer is forty-six.
How, how do you charge your residents, um, for water and sewer? Is it by the?
We have, it's part of our level we have.
And how many people are there, I don't want to say permanently, but they live in an RV, they're there consistently?
Our average occupancy, if we count cabins and, and RVs, is somewhere around sixty.
So, those folks are residents, essentially.
What's that?
Those folks are residents. I mean, they're not, they're not hooking up and pulling out and going up to north when it gets hot down there.
There's, there's, there's probably thirty-five or residents, and then fifteen nights a month, or just past, you know, what am I saying? Fifteen pads per night or month, might be past for short-term studies.
I think the difficulty that I have, um, with considering a reduction, um, is trying to consider our own residents right now, um. And you've got thirty-five residents that live out there that you're not charging, and I understand, but, I understand that you put the infrastructure in, but in my mind, and I'm very simple, I, I'm not a construction guy. But if we have a development come in here and build a neighborhood, that developer's going to put that infrastructure in, and then the residents are going to pay the bill.
Unless we eat into the property, the city would normally deliver the main lines within the rights of way at its cost.
I understand that.
Okay.
But now we've been, you've been out there for, I mean, to. But now we've been, you've been out there for, I mean, to think about doing that for another seven years, I think it's a somewhat of a disservice. I, I'm not, I'm not saying I wouldn't kind of negotiate that a little bit with you, but, you know, when our base rate is forty-six dollars for sewer and you want it to go to five, or-
No, that's forty-six flat rate, right? And then five dollars per thousand gallons after that, right? If you want me to pay the forty-five dollars flat rate, I mean, per person, per, per month, plus the five dollars, then instead of an additional thirty-five or thirty-six dollars for water and sewer, I'm gonna want close to a hundred dollars a month.
Yeah, so that's what I'm trying to understand, I'm, I don't understand, I want you to educate me because I, I honestly don't, I'm not trying to be funny, um, but if you're not charging anybody out there of water and sewer, and you've got permanent, permanent people that are there, they should, they should burden some of the cost. Um, and I, I don't know their, I, I'm not out there, so I don't know their, their backgrounds, I don't know if they work, I don't know if they don't work, I, I don't know. But I have a hard time saying to my residents here in town, my own selves, um, well, those folks out there, you know, don't have to pay part of their, part of the increase, it's just gonna go to Hidden Grove and that corporation's gonna have to pay it. Well, that doesn't make sense to me, so I, I don't know.
Is it individually metered or is there one meter?
You can't, you, you can't individually meter, uh, well, you could individually water meter each site, but it's like a lot of which are re-equities per meter, but it'd be like three thousand dollars per pad just to do the meter.
So you only have one base rate?
We have three meters.
So you only have three base rates?
Three base rates. And then, you know, and also what we're asking is to pay the base rate for those three meters, right? For water. And then your sewer, we're really making a lot of money.
We're not making any money, though. Please, please understand that.
That's where, where it really hits us, is the sewer. And that's the biggest cost for us, is pump station, pumping and everything else. Our cost per gallon sewage you get into the city is far greater than what your average citizen is paying.
Well, yeah, you're, you, you're out, you're way out, so that, that just makes common sense, right? Um, but I can't say, you know, to somebody that lives across the street from the city that they should pay more because they live across the street from City Hall and they don't live three miles out of town. I mean, that, that's what I'm trying to make sense of.
Well, again, but you provided that with water and sewer at no cost. We had to pay for our own.
So what, so what happens in seven years when?
And we pay full rents. Full rents or whatever.
My only concern is that most of these people in this room, their water bills doubled in price, maybe even more than that, even hours included. I have a hard time agreeing to anything like this when I wasn't given the option to agree to it for anybody in this room. So that's, that's my only concern.
Well, I, I understand your, your concern and everything. I, I just, I can't understand how you and the city can't recognize the fact that, that, that no matter what we, we put up this money upfront in order to develop here, and we're not asking for it on that at all. We're still offering the payment, it's just pay it or the less because we power it to put in the money that would normally be going, you know, the fees to go into paper or your bonds to repay the water and sewer lines we put in. As far as for water and sewer proper, we, we're proud, with these agents, we're paying at least as much as they would, just not for the infrastructure.
But is that not a, a normal cost of being a developer, is that you are putting in that infrastructure?
Only within the property line, which is not part of the whole point, I'm not. But the, if the cost to put water and sewer to the property line within the right of way is borne by the city, okay? Once you cross the property line, then it's the developer's responsibility, that's totally our cost. I'm only referring to the one and a half million dollars within the right of way to get water and sewer to the property that would normally have been borne by the city and pay for the bonds.
But I think that's also part of the responsibility in the agreement that you guys signed when you chose to be where the location is. I don't, I don't, I mean, I get what you're saying, but at the same time, you guys agreed to put that infrastructure in and-
And will you be willing then to be, because right now we have these, we pay for water and sewer and for property taxes, we are not anywhere close to getting the benefits of what we are paying in, in property taxes and water and sewer with the, with what we put in.
I don't think that we can include that conversation tonight because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, at this point, uh, I'm not sure where the council spends on, on it. It's certainly something that we could talk about and discuss maybe further in terms of the whole thing and really look at it. It sounds like they're not ready to make a decision tonight, uh, about this. So I, I would suggest that we, we're at this point, we're not making a decision at this point, but let us look into it.
May I ask what it costs to live out there for one month?
Between six and seven hundred dollars per ad, per month, which is a hundred and fifty dollars more a month than the place down two miles outside of the camp. So I'm already a hundred and fifty dollars more a month than this big story to us.
Are you talking about Sammy D's or whatever it is?
Whatever it is.
It used to be Henry D's?
Yeah.
Yeah, but y'all offer a whole lot more than what they do. You have a whole lot more than that.
But you, you look at our hundred and fifty dollars a month more, it's, uh, it gets commensured with what you get anywhere with that level of, of, I mean, if you took that level of, I mean, the outside of, uh, equivalent distance outside of Dallas and Austin or anything, it's that six and seven fifty range for a month.
Then, as I recall in the first one, can you please pay whatever you guys put us tax payments or not?
Nope, no taxes at all. We have four of them.
Okay, four of them. Right, I follow.
I, I just need to educate myself a little more, I, just by the letter, I, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to see the difference, and I don't, I don't know that at this point, and I don't feel confident making a decision today.
And if you can general, so you could, if you go look for it, you could look for this. When you charge, let's say you charge somebody a hundred dollars for water, okay? Thirty dollars for that water might be for the water itself and processing and your staff to, to, to read meters and things like that. The other sixty percent might be to pay back for the initial bond, I mean, to install the, the pipe and the, and the meters and the fire irons and everything else that's been up and right. And so, we're not asking to, to not pay others. We still wanna pay thirty percent that, that everybody else will pay for. We just don't wanna pay for a time, an extra sixty percent that's normally allocated for the initial install of the infrastructure. So if you can take that into consideration, I would be glad to come back and talk to you.
Yeah, we, we certainly can put this on our workshop and have a discussion about it. That's what the council prefers to do, all entertaining motion.
I'll make a motion, we'll discuss it by third floor.
Okay, motion is, we discussed this in workshop, we have a second.
I'll second.
Second, Mr. Captain. Uh, all those in favor, raise your right hand, motion carries, and we'll clear on the workshop. Thank you. All right, Mr. Fisher, I believe, Ms. Parsons, we're finally up. Uh, Mr. Fisher is here tonight, just to kind of share with you this information about this grant with water, uh, lead water lines. Uh, so why don't you just take it and tell the council what that's all about?
Thanks, Bob Fisher, I'm a KSA engineer, C engineer. Uh, the packet that I handed out, it's got the current projects at the top, it felt like that was pertinent, uh, for you to make this decision, uh, that's going, going on right now. What the federal government has done is every city across the nation told them that they wanted a lead copper inventory of all of the pipe that's in town. Uh, Mr. Massey and his group put together that inventory for you. It was about two years ago that they put this out. Uh, it was mandatory, uh, to get that done. Uh, it looked like, I looked at the inventory, it was being hot holding, when they dig up, to pack it, see the pipe, confirm what it is, uh, what was primarily done, and if it was anything in homes that were built before nineteen eighty-nine, there is the possibility, and we live definitely there, but there is a possibility of lead pipes that were used. We know that lead is not good for your health. So they're trying to get lead out, get all that taken care of, but all across the nation, there's pipe on ground that's seventy, eighty, nine hundred years old. So this is, this is every. So I looked at that, and you probably got somewhere around eight hundred and seventy-five in action, is that about right? And the vast majority is listed as not enough. And when they initially put this out, they said that if within ten years, they're gonna come back and they're gonna mandate it to be done. So, you know, typical federal government, probably an unfunded mandate, you know, how do we get this done? Where can we get more money to do this, you know? You're putting all this stuff on us. So the Water Board, uh, maybe a year ago, no, actually two years ago, said, well, we're going to have funding available to replace that pipe. So an application was turned in for two years, but they now came back and said, this is for service line. The service line is from your main line to the water heater and then on to the first instance. Normally, you're not allowed to go from the meter to the house because that's on private property. It is gonna be up to the homeowner to fix that if they want to. The federal government cannot mandate, me as a homeowner, that I have to do it. If I just say, well, I'm gonna die at some point in time anyway, I'll just bring the lead. They cannot mandate that citizens take care of that pipe from the meter to the house. Now, they will go back to the city and say, yes, you have to take care of from the main line to the meter because the next person to notice that house may want to replace that line and get that needs to be done. So with all that said, I know that was, but I'm trying to give you all the background, and I'm not gonna recommend that you do this tonight. I'm trying to give you all the facts that you can make and form a decision as to what the council wants to do. So they sent us, or they sent you, uh, a letter, which is the second page in the package that I gave you, saying that, uh, the city of Honey Grove would be awarded three million, six hundred and sixty-four thousand, nine hundred and eighty dollars. That sounds great, but that is not all grant money. Some of that is loan money and some of that is grant money. You got three projects going on right now. One of them is a hundred percent grant, there's no, no cost to that. It's called a committee developed block grant, so it's a smaller project that's gonna be for your grass storage. Then you've got the big one, which is, uh, the sewer, sewer.
Sewer.
Yeah. So you've got the sewer, that's a big chunk of money, that is a, uh, let's see, that is a seventy percent, uh, loan forgiveness grant and a thirty percent loan. Then the water project that you got is a ninety percent grant and a ten percent loan. So pretty good deals on, on all of those, that the vast majority of that money, I know that it's still raising rates and costing citizens money and everything, but you've got a lot of money from the state, from the federal government to make some of these repairs. This one is not as good as those on there. This one is a fifty-one percent grant, forty-nine percent loan. Now, so the first question I asked when you were there was, okay, do we just take the grant money? Is that, yeah, we'll, we'll take the grant money, we don't want the loan. But they told me nothing, you can't, you can't do that question. I figured they could, but I hadn't asked the question. So then the next question I asked was, okay, we've already got a city, it's a very small city, they're not gonna raise the rates, I know nobody's gonna wanna raise the rates. I said, can we take less money? Can we not take three point six million? These lines that are going to the house are one inch long, so it's not a lot of weight. It's eight or twelve inch sewer lines, they're very small. Uh, the answer to that question was yes, that we can take less money. Pretty, pretty much any donation that you want, but it'll still be a fifty-one, forty-nine. So you could say, well, we're just gonna do a meter. So it'd be, what, five hundred and ten thousand grant and quarter of ninety thousand loan. So you could make any determination that you want. The only reason, as, the timing on this is horrible, you know, I'm like, why, why didn't you come and do this in five years, you know, let's make that decision. But this is, you know, a Water Board did this, it's- So, uh, you, you have until the end of this month to do a letter of intent. A letter of intent doesn't obligate you to do anything, doesn't say whatever the amount is, that's saying, I'm gonna borrow a dollar, I'm gonna borrow a million, it doesn't, this is a letter of intent. So, but you have to determine in this letter of intent, what is the amount that you're gonna, you're gonna try to get four, three, four, six million, I would probably think so. Uh, are you gonna try to get a million, what, what is the amount? That's up to council, that's not up to me. Uh, because at some point in time, you're gonna have to do this. I don't know if there'll be more money within the next ten years to do it or not, or maybe, I have no way of predicting what the federal government's gonna do. I don't think anybody in the sort of this. Uh, but it is an opportunity for you that I felt like you at least needed to know about. There'll be zero cost to do the letter of intent, letter of intent's really easy, it's one page thing. We turn that in, get that done for you, we wouldn't charge you anything. So, but then, the next thing is actual applications. That has to be done by November thirtieth. There is a cost associated with putting that application together, because there's quite a bit of work that goes into that. You can turn this thing down, you can say, no, I, I'm willing, it's not a problem. You can, you can do that tonight, you can do a letter of intent, didn't do that. Uh, I would, you know, if you do decide on an amount, I would tell you that the group that then had, that did the original rate study, they do those things for free. So I would ask them, whatever the amount is to do rate study, the council has the full information, is it gonna be a dollar increase or is, you know, what is it gonna be? I don't, I don't know, based upon the amount of what you decided. And then you make a decision, and at that point in time, you can work with it. And if you have a letter of intent, in November, you can say, no, it's a ten dollar increase, I'm not doing it. So you can turn it down then. That's pretty much all I have to tell you, you can ask me questions, I'll try to answer them. What we do make, need to make a decision, a couple of things, you have a lot of options. You can turn it down, completely right now, you can say, well, X amount, we're gonna do a letter of intent and go through the process, get the information, and next council, you can then make a decision. The third option, because you're gonna have to get it applied at some point in time, would be to hire, this is how we business, uh, we have the unending title, who does these compliance things, they can come and meet with the mayor, Jazzy and, and Mr. Massey, and put together a plan, and she just already bought our way, it'll be very good cost. Put together a plan over the next eight years, how are we gonna address this, what are we gonna do? So that's our third option, what you can decide. Questions?
Questions, yes.
What would be the timeframe for the payback for the forty-nine percent that we would be responsible for?
Every month that they do is usually thirty percent, is that correct?
When does that start, though? I mean-
We're gonna take it a lot now.
I, I understand that if we do the letter of intent and the application by November thirtieth, what's the timeline on the funds being released and then us being responsible for the law?
Other than Lori, I don't know, everybody else, who do I ask? Water Board doesn't know fast, fast is not in their vocabulary. It's gonna take a year and a half before we're gonna have money in hand to even start up. So once you sell the bonds, the clock starts to tick on paying back. So in that year and a half timeframe, that's putting with, kicking.
Let me ask you a different question, when are we obligated?
When are you obligated?
We did the letter of intent, the application, they say, yeah, you get the money. When are we obligated to, to, I mean, when are we kind of locked in that this is where we're going? Is it the application, is it after the letter of intent, or?
With the application, and then they'll say, you have the money, and then the council will blow us, it'll say yes or no, whatever.
We'll take it, we won't.
Yeah, so you can still start it down then.
Okay, that's, that's kinda what I'm getting at.
You have some costs that you add in the merger for the application. You can still start that.
Understand, thank you.
I know it needs to be done, but I think if we increase water rates again like this, we'll be burnt at the stake even more than we're already being burnt already.
I mean, it could.
I think they're bad.
I didn't catch all that.
It would not be, we would definitely be enemy number ones, even more so than we already are.
Oh, I agree, I'm not giving you a break.
No, I know.
I think, I'll be honest, I think you'd be crazy to take it for a point six million.
Right.
That's not my decision, and yours.
Well, and, and that was really, when D N called me, we were in the middle of this, we were in the fourth, trying to work on budget, and I took a deep sigh, and I said, D N, this is not the day to call to talk to you. So it's, but the council, the issue here is that at this point, what we are, what we have to do by the deadline date is, if we are interested at all, we have to, we have to present a letter of intent.
Yeah.
And we have to specify how much we would.
Is it, is it five million thousands, and what is the number or something?
Yeah. And I know that D N has put together some figures, I think, in terms of if it were five million thousand, right, you've got some information?
Uh, all of them.
Uh, and you may not be interested at all, that may, it may be real easy for the system. Are you gonna need a copy?
D N is your feet high ass, the last.
I thought you meant.
The count, Doka Cat, right? Yeah, she's the Doka Cat.
For y'all's convenience, um, I just quickly, there's a number, just to give you an idea.
He's speaking to the mic, sorry.
Uh, just to give you an idea of what, what your payments would be, if you get, um, say, if you, if you borrowed, you need a whole bank of little over a million dollars, in no finance, half a million dollars, for thirty years, seventy-eight million, of little over twenty-six thousand dollars a year. And you, but that two million, you can finance one more, uh, for thirty years, seventy, I think, uh, fifty-two thousand dollars a year. Fifty-two thousand dollars. You'd be financing about a million eight, with a bank of ninety-three thousand, little over a million, like that. That, that's great. But you can, in fact, you know, do the, the smaller amounts, and we're gonna bottom, you tell y'all, what you can get done for that amount, if you want, you know, me? Or if you have to, just be a few miles away.
So the letter of intent would be, we have to know the amount by the end of October, or we just have to say that we're interested in a grant, so?
I don't know, too, I don't think it's.
That's what Rudy said. Rudy said that you had to have it, but I don't know. That's what.
We can check with Rudy.
Yeah. Yeah. Well, let's, let me just ask, uh, the council in terms of feedback, other word, what you're thinking, uh, at this point? If, like I said, like I, my first reaction to D N was, don't talk to me, don't talk to me about, at this moment. Um, but honestly, it's not my decision, it's really the council's decision. Um, yeah. So what you're thinking?
Uh, we know the cost and the scope of this project, are you saying it's gonna cost three, four, six million dollars to do it? And they're gonna be giving us that, or?
They're gonna give you three point six million. I don't know where that number came from, where they came up with that.
How much, do we, do we have any idea how much it would cost us to replace this line?
Yeah, well, the problem is, for those eight hundred and seventy-five connections, probably eight hundred and sixty of them said, unknown. So I have no clue how many you've got. I mean, it's only one inch wide. I can't imagine that the number would be near three point six million dollars. I don't know.
So we don't know, you have to.
That's, it's a shot.
We just be throwing the dollar at the wall.
Yeah. And you, you can go down, obviously, if you said, well, we're gonna do a hundred thousand dollars. You're not gonna get any of that, there's nothing we're going through, other than still, now, that's the pipe.
And that was period of these, is it, that we do these, like, as far as the timeline, that they can come out and ask for, possibly, these lead lines, maybe four feet or?
At some point, they do, but right now, there, there's no way to test it out right now. Not, that's gonna happen.
But it's mandated.
You want?
Yeah, they're, you're gonna have to get the inventory cleaned up, that is gonna happen. And that's, but that's the thing that Siggy could help you with, you know, if I had her down to talk to you, and she could do something on an hourly basis. To do that, and really have an accurate thing, what they, what they're usually doing, like what Bottom did, was they had a group come in, and at each meter, they dug it, showed it, dug it out, and checked the lines on each side, and confirmed what it was. Now, obviously, it's gonna be a lot cheaper to have a high school student that Charles spends a day with, trains, and then let them do it. It's in the higher company that comes to do it. So you have options, you can get some of that done. You are gonna have to get a better inventory, the, I don't know, it's not, I'm gonna ask you. Siggy, Siggy will know the answer to that question, you know. I, I would advise you that at least talk to her.
This says zero percent interest.
Zero percent interest is for, yes, it does, it's for the inventory, it's, where is that?
And then the service line.
I saw that too, Laura.
It's on the, yeah, on the third page, the shorter page.
Page three?
Yeah.
Very double.
Yeah, it says service line inventory, it's zero percent, so, if you, if it was a hundred thousand dollars, you're probably, you'd still owe a hundred thousand dollars, there'd be no interest on it.
So, but the ninety-four thou, you said it would be around ninety-four thousand dollars a year for thirty years, that's two point eight million dollars. So that's still more than.
That's all for the interest, that's not for replacement of the bonds.
Okay, so it'd be a little less than that, okay.
I know this is a whole time, it's, I'm glad you have a minute, I think so.
I made a motion to get off, some of the letter of intent, the former record at all.
That we not do anything. This, alright, so, uh, there's a motion on the floor that we not do anything. Is there a second? Alright, we have a motion, and it's in the second of the slide, uh, any further discussion? Alright, I'll in favor of not taking any action on this particular grant, right, for, uh, motion carries you now, this way, I appreciate your opinion.
Thank you all.
D N.
Thank you, Laura.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
Bye.
Okay, you're, you're now, thank you so much, D N. This is, we're down now to the City of Honey Grove, Champaign, Dupont, Ketchikan, community revamping the sign by the pavilion. Uh, this is the sign that's out on Highway eighty-two, that's out of pavilion, that's been there a long, long time, and not much has happened to it.
Rajal. Hello. Uh, for y'all, for y'all, we did not know, I'm the big camera, former president, uh, we have talked, we spent a lot of time on it, of putting a sign, a better sign in Honey Grove, that has, you know, in town, a lot of champions. And we were gonna put a big sign there, and the applicants were thinking, well, we really need a little wall, eighty-two, to get those to come in town, to support, to, to bring, and rock the road. Uh, they're like, uh, you know. We went out there and we took a sign, and it's good, I mean, being used for it, it hasn't been a long time, and so, I've had a chat with you, and I was like, okay, you know, we're about science, and we, so. I'm gonna tell you all my thoughts for it, and y'all, uh, we thought about how to, of getting sponsors from businesses that's advertising, because as a small business, advertising is really expensive. Uh, making affordable advertising on E two, making a really popular highway, which is, we're, we're around. Uh, twenty people in just now, like, and when we get a lot, like, pop, pop, like, they don't get a pop up here, to run in and, uh, pop it, uh, bang, the pharmacy. Uh, so, I don't know how, uh, looks on the city side about communicating with the sign of the pavilion. Uh, the pavilion as well, we talked about, we had a one, maybe a one-to-one farmer's market thing, to try to just bring something to the town, and also, stop people there, to help, to be able to come into town. Uh, for more than, move art on E two, and shortening, and, you know, the R B card, there's a lot to figure.
I have a question. Have you contacted Tech Bot about putting up actual signs that are at the exits, east and west? You know, that would point, you know, downtown Honey Grove, or?
We haven't, uh, we haven't.
I don't know what their criteria is, but I know in other places, they put up the signs that say, you know, Kentucky Fried Chicken, and Taco Bell, and all this is this way, and the gas station's that way, and, not necessarily one of those big blue signs, but maybe there's a, one of the brown historic looking signs that they could put on the highways that would point, I.
Right. And I don't know, I don't think some of the, they charge for.
I have no clue. I, I.
Because I'm, I was, as small as, I was building out, putting like, a little store for, I was in Paris, and one in a not-so-popular area was a minimal twelve thousand dollars a year.
Right.
And I was like, there's, there's no take, peaceful for that, that's all, I mean, there's really not. And, I mean, Honey Grove, we know we need, this is almost where, we need to come people here. And so, when they come down, like, Jeff, and they came, and they were, they wanted to, it does here. Uh, so that's just the part, I did, I'm finding use for, for development for the city. Uh, it's already there, it's probably used, uh, streets or metal electric, types of it. Uh, there's a extension port that run over, and they go soon, the fireworks, but soon, they worked out there. Uh, and the William Paulso, a huge outside, that can use for the city, that's happening.
Yeah, I'm not opposed to that. I, I like the sign, I'm just saying that it might be free to ask Xbox to put something up too, to point on the exits.
I would be thinking of, with the doll stage, this lot sign is something for sure, that, you know, is free with the city, under, you know, my house. It's free for the city, from the city. Uh, meanwhile, with Xbox, we need to get a new sign, and I don't know what that looks like, but I'm pretty sure.
So, so you're just asking for permission to do something with that sign, to put some other, something else up there that looks, is what you're asking today?
Are, are you looking to put up, like, this looks like, I can't read it, I'm sorry, but on the.
There's a bunch of like things that I was reading.
Like Honey Grove Pharmacy, it looks like, is at the top, but how do you pick those businesses? If, if we get to a point where they want off it, do they have to be members of the chamber, or?
What we were gonna do is, like, our, like, have each slot, you, you know, like, I had talked to a couple of people, like, I mean, we're gonna have seven spots, you know, still getting on, like, this side here, but they were talking about, like, four points on the sign, maybe like, the less comment, maybe. We were thinking about giving, you know, five hundred dollars, uh, I'm not sure, a little comment side for a whole year, and how would they for their sign, and then, like, so we need to work on the sign, so like, I was, to, to do, think, I, I, you know, something, something that's up over, I mean, we go to the chamber, and we need to for, if we're business, how, like, relevant, maybe put something towards the bar to, to help you that. Uh, so, it's just a really rough draft right now, so we can't make a decision from y'all.
But y'all are also wanting to use the pavilion for farmer's market type stuff?
Yes.
So previously, the, the City Lake people leased that from us, so we would, I asked Mr. Hamilton about it as well, and it would have to be something that y'all leased from us, for y'all to be able to do that. And there would have to be some type of indemnification to the city, so that we wouldn't be liable.
Yeah.
But also, an event insurance would have to be held by those, those folks as well.
And it's not currently under lease by anyone?
No, it's, it's the city's, yeah.
Would the sign, would the sign be the same? Can they lease that out, I mean?
If it's their sign, they can lease whatever they want to, yeah.
And that money being used, probably need to get, that's not what go into, like, Rose, and make some.
No, we understand, it's just, you know, if you're, you're probably gonna have to lease the building and/or the sign to, to be able to, I, I would think, to make money on it, for, for the chamber.
And we, we are offering, the job for the city, guys, I know they're very interested in, so like, we can get a lower out there per se, I know it's a big lot, too. But we don't mind turning the trees, planting the fire, out there, making it look nice, for the weather by.
So you're not, but all is, that is on the agenda, is the sign, and you're asking permission to do the sign?
It's not the pavilion, just the sign.
The pavilion?
No, just the.
Just the sign, that's why, that's what I'm getting at. As bad as the issue is, not, but we will allow them to, uh, work on the sign.
Can they, can we allow them to work on the sign?
You mean?
Without having to lease to them?
What was the question?
Can they work on the sign without a lease?
Or show them from us, because we own the.
Well, it belongs to the city, with the, it's, and they're out of the building, and they're just wanting to put new style signs out there.
But they're gonna charge for said signs, actually, in this.
We don't mind, I believe.
Who, who is gonna get the money, once you put it up there, if you're gonna lease spaces, who's that, who's that money gonna be?
The chamber, the, the ones that are released.
Yeah, you need to get a document from them, if you're signed, and they're gonna make money off of it, then you need to get a lease fee.
I say, I said, come with the public to lease, uh, for the, for the sign.
Okay, I follow that vote.
You what, I didn't hear what you said.
I follow that vote, we have been, I'm there, so.
You did, but it's okay, I'm.
Okay, no, we know that's not the same rate we would want, but it's, I have, I have, I have a, so. Doing this contest, especially if you workshop, or this, very interesting.
We can't vote on it, I mean, I watch.
No, you're not.
And we're not planning on, we, the pavilion, so it's springtime anyway. Uh, and we've already been reached out, like, kind of grab those, get, be back, something, the heart center in Long Beach, I mean, they're like, hey, we can take that for each other, I'm, or should we go over to you, or something? They're really wanting to advertise those here in Honey Grove as well, so we're building a relationship over there.
I, I'm not, I am not opposed to it, but I wanna make sure that if you guys are gonna benefit from funds, that it's right. Um, that's just my own take, it must be for anyone else, but I, I think it's a great idea. Um, and, obviously, if it's, no one's using it now, we, we should be, so.
And I know, I know there's like, or whatever, and we could like, you know, find cover, and people like that, um, but you can't see it from both sides, having, and going from, on E two, so.
But could, we can take the discussion to workshop, and then a vote to the next meeting?
Yeah. How about that, is that a motion?
We can discuss the lease agreement, what it would cost, or whatever, and electricity and all that, and workshop, if you'll come to that.
Yeah. That a motion?
A, a motion, that we take it to workshop for discussion.
Okay, good, motion, and swing, in the intent for workshop for discussion, and more details, my second from Mr. Massey, I'll in favor. Motion carries you now, this way. And you're up again. Uh, this is, I think, like, Cameron's asking for donations for the new Christmas tree, and wreath that will be put down by Allen Square. And, uh, before you get too far into that, let me just say that it's, that, uh, uh, Mr. Fisher told me, because he arrived, that he would, uh, do some, he would support someone. And so, we, I just need to write a letter to him, and say, hell, all this to your, your, and we'll talk about how much he, we might ask, ask for in there. There you go. And go ahead with yours.
Uh, for our Christmas, that's where the reserves, um, we're taking, we love seeing the Christmas completely way, we, Chambers built a lot of money on the bridges each year, it's a, we get, we do them. And so, we were, with the Christmas. And so, we were, with the Christmas lights on the top of the building, was, are beautiful, and doing a classic Christmas, would just, every single year would be amazing, it would fit the charm of our town. Uh, so we're, I feel the chamber really working on, like, legacy and traditions. And with the tree, it has a seven-year warranty on the whole tree, a three-year on the lights. Uh, but it's designed to allow us to hear from here to here, and you can add the same tree to grow a forty-foot tall. So as we grow the city, we can grow this tree. And so, the flag in front of it is going to be with sponsors, that has helped sponsor the tree. Uh, and so, with legacy and that, I have some, like, she buying a wreath for her grandmother, so that wreath will be there for the next twenty years, and she has people that, that wreath will be there. Uh, so the tree is, uh, I've reached out to a lot of people that are just kind of for, so, for town, uh, you know. Uh, and so that's why you can, can ask for y'all to place on the tree too, just for recognition of, like, y'all being part of the Christmas tree and the old square as well. Uh, so, we're about twenty, like, twenty-three percent of our whole right now. Uh, so we would like to report, but not, we didn't understand, we're going to continue to raise up the rate of weight.
So you're asking the city to make a donation to that one?
We're asking how we can be a part of it.
There's a difference here, so you don't have to go thanks to the tree, you also have wreaths, that's one fifty, and also the white people to send to families. You don't have to do it as a council, but you can also do it as individuals, it's just, it's more like when a school, you have a school board, you have an age, so it's the same group, and so the Mr. Kathy and the Chats, Mr. Kathy and Lori, and this Maxi, this Maxi.
So you're asking us as individuals to donate? Or, or is the city experiencing, the parks, towards?
It's a deal.
I mean, I, I'm- Your donation for individuals?
Yeah.
But-
It's just a present, just a, oh, now, if y'all would like it.
You don't care where the money comes from?
Well, I, I, I like it, I mean.
I think what, I think what, what Mr. Moon might be getting against the issue of spending tax better than money for this, and, uh, you're, you're a deal likely to the council members as individuals, if, if it's on one end.
There was a lot of, for example, saying that we, also, Andrew Swarfield, we also want to include everyone in the, in the, because it will be something that will be better.
This is the case, say no.
Yeah, you can say no.
No harm.
Has, has the city donated or supported the chamber in the past financially?
Uh, we-
Lots. We did the Christmas lot last year.
Yeah, we actually, um, we voted a lot, so. Um, yeah, uh, I, I'm not sure, where are you with, city funds being donated? Nope. Okay. Hey, hey, no, yeah.
No, I'm gonna be here to like, one.
Oh, please.
We're in the name of being, y'all's representative that means Jesus helped us a lot. Guidance as a good chamber, um, but also love on this step in as younger folks and help create change. I think you guys so much for support that's a part of the sign. Um, thank you for believing in us. We really appreciate it. And you can't, you know, just be like, we live in the footprints, okay? Um, but anybody that supports us, just fascinating, good job. We really appreciate it. Um, but yeah, that's something to see if you guys want to come to the Chamber of Commerce. That's okay. If you can, you can do that too.
Thank you. Our questions have come and they're regarding membership.
I think it's, I think it's a no brainer that we should. I don't know if we can. Um, I believe that we should.
But I heard you.
Um, I'm just saying that, um, for what these young ladies have done, just with David Prophet Day, bringing people in, it is only benefiting us and it is only benefiting our citizens.
No.
Um, and I, whether, whether we agree to do this or not, I applaud what you've done. Um, just seeing the hard work and hustle, uh, it's impressive. So, um, I don't know what, I don't know what he's gonna say, but, um, I, it's a no brainer for us to be partners with you in some way, shape or form.
Thank you very much. Many people in our seats experience where you can ask someone, well, say this. There were potential applicants in your school. Think about the two issues before you tonight. Using your sign, using your zebra. If the city isn't a member of the Chamber of Commerce and everybody here finds it necessary to accuse themselves, you don't get a decision. So sometimes you have to be distant in order to be good friends, in order to help. Partnership doesn't necessarily depend on being a member of the organization. Partnership depends on this by here. If you think they need some money, send us some money. If you, if you join up, then you're gonna have to disclose when they present this issue. You have to say, hey, guess what? The city's a member. Which disqualifies your lawyer too, somehow.
So if we are, if we are an individual member, would we have to recuse ourselves?
If there is some sort of financial thing that you're gonna vote for where they have seen a financial interest from the city, you have to disclose that. Whether it's a recusal or not, depends on the facts, that they didn't have much money. But you have to disclose, I'm a member of the Chamber, they want money from us. I need everybody to know, I need the record to reflect that. And it, it's, it's a, it's not a difficult situation to be in. I agree, they do great stuff and you need to support them. The question is, are you able to do that if you're in the organization? And the answer might be not at all.
Well, is it possible? And we have to check with, um, our committee, uh, the head of our committee, um, to just grant you guys free membership? Cause we're not asking for money. It's just more, it's more of a love of this partnership, yes. And we're just sticking by laws, but if you guys are with the city, kind of, where you're changing, we'll be looking up for that as free.
And you all have support, I mean, arrangement first, man. Help us design, all things. Um, I do, I, we're not just here to ask for money. Uh, we're here to, we, we're a regular, like, we want the road, kind of, to, um, offer it. It doesn't limit us, you mean, it doesn't ever come here. Uh, as a city as a whole, so.
Completely awesome. Go ahead.
Come on. Whether or not they paid for it is not dealing with significance. If you're a member sworn in and you're a member at a place, if you're looking at travel roads, then you're still a member. And the fact that you paid or didn't pay for it may not be significant. I think your best partnership is the one you've got right now, a little bit distant. You can talk to each other, you can applaud what each other's doing. They can come and they can allow assistance, consistent, help a law against. Legal answers are always the happy answers. Uh, but that, that's, my suggestion is, don't do it. Because then you're gonna have, every time this happens, we're gonna have to play an inventory and say who's a member and who isn't. If they wanna recognize you for the service, great, and I think you should. And you should applaud them for what they're doing. That doesn't mean you have to be married in order to do that.
I think he's saying we could have a relationship with our.
Just wanna thank you so much.
There is a new law in front of you.
Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you so much. And I'm going to, or had I been, pull the H off the agenda and we'll talk about that in the workshop. I'm gonna have to say, she's in terms of. Let's move at this point, uh, and by the way, let me just say that Jay, we're taking off the agenda at this point. And so we're down to, uh, purchasing a fire truck from the road via, via, uh, fire.
Um, I'm sorry, I have a last thing. I'm trying to say other kinds of situations to this team. I know that your number is huge and I heart solid. Um, I'm done. I'm, I'm just trying to be like from the eight hundred that they were asking for. Um, I have a little vendor that's working extremely well with us. And I've got two other options I'm gonna propose. One was four hundred and ninety-six thousand. What that gives me is, for N F P A, it's National Fire Protection Association. It gives me something that needs better partners to class A pump. Which gives you the credit for the ISO rating, as it is. It's not exactly ideal for us because it's a much smaller truck, but it does give us an engine. Uh, it gives us required capacity for tank size, for hoes and for ladders. Um, again, four hundred and ninety-six thousand, I'm assuming you'll have to get into your back. Um, I did not do any police department based on that. Uh, I can, I can get it, but I did not. That'd be a brand new, brand new purchase. So your interest rates are gonna be pretty much the same as they're gonna be on the original one that, that I proposed. Somewhere in that five and a half percent range, you can go ten, twelve, fifteen years. The other obstacle is a demo. Um, I know we, we talked about used fire trucks and how a used fire truck can inherit these problems. Deal with this one is, a two thousand and eighteen year was, uh, seven year old. But you're not inheriting the problems of a used fire truck because it's, it's been, for lack of a better term, they, uh, it's a demo truck. It's a truck that's been here for around some show of fire problems and say, this is what we have to offer. Those police department. Uh, and this one is significant, well, that's a three hundred and seventy-five pound. For, was basically a brand new truck, I don't know what I'll just own it, but it's gonna have a special oil. Uh, this one is very comparable to what I was asking for, except it is far better equipped because it has a better quality of trunk, meaning it's different brand, it's better quality. Uh, I gave you listing, uh, community listing partner lots and I did, well. The biggest difference are gonna, the percentage is slightly higher, but it's gonna be in that five and a half percent. The biggest difference is they'll only go ten years because they have the truck. And if you got your five, seven, and ten year payment options in front of you on it. It is, uh, for sale, but not being advertised for sale at that next unit. So it's being authorized to us, uh, but it's not necessarily as a for sale. Now, which is knocking on this or go way too long, it's also, meaning it's time to go, probably pretty quickly. Uh, again, I know the financial situation stuff right now, but I think this truck about these bests are moving off. Being said, you're already one side of the ISO. Okay, so, I got, I got into a red line, starting to support you. So it's very interesting with ISOs, country as a whole, used ISO, uh, ISO to give your rate. What's interesting about the state of Texas is they did contracts with a company called Parents. Very interesting, they need sure it's down, so what they do, they take all of that, they pile together and they make a sum. And then in turn, they give ISO, a recommendation on rating for each individual city. Now, those that don't know, ISO is from one to ten. One being as good as it gets. City of Ohio, absolutely a one. At ten, it would be uninsured, meaning if your house burns, the lights go out. Uh, as of right now, city of Ohio is a six. It's very dangerous to go into your ISO, it's a clean patients, as a whole, we don't have anything to do with that. That's on the camera, so we're very indirectly, uh, we're very indirect in that. We, there's nothing we can do as far as clean patients, I mean, not that long. The other two is basically percent of cities, water supply, fire department. Again, I can't, can't speak to the water department, that, that's one y'all that told me, on everything. But when it comes to fire department, I do have, you know, that's basically one thing. Um, and the biggest thing they look at are response times, heavy personnel, how are they able to respond with it? And capitalizes, the only truck we have that care about is the one. Uh, what's gonna end up happening, a little bit of a police sale, I have to suspect, because with various, it's not necessarily part of the years. What they look at is, does the truck meet the requirements to be a Class A pump? Now, since they don't necessarily set the requirements themselves, what they do is they call back to the N F P A, which handles National Fire Protection Association. They're basically the ones that apply the rules for firefighting in the United States. Uh, N F P A is not, so if you wanna look at that, it's N F P A hundred and fifty. It's the code that, that covers fire act. Uh, they have recommendations equivalent for frontline service, reserve status, and retirement. Where we get into it is, N F P A, uh, what it says is retirement. Full retirement apparatus recommended at the twenty-five year mark. So we're in twenty-eight. What's gonna end up happening is, if they committed to start, they're gonna wanna get that truck and say, okay, we'll pass the twenty-five year mark. And so they're gonna start down there. Where I have a quality is the fact that it has passed the twenty-five year mark. And this is gonna kinda get into a little more essential of, of what we're doing. So, I'm gonna give you a scenario. If we have a house fire in C N O P tonight, and I commit my guys to pull both off that fire and do five, that fire tonight. If that truck, cat truck, it fails, there's a very high probability that those guys inside that structure could get hurt. If those guys get hurt, the first thing that's gonna happen, the first thing that's gonna happen is there's gonna be a knife. So a knife, knife is a special institution, body person, so you can have. Anytime a fire department gets hurt, they're going to, they're going to go, the investigation. But they're gonna come in and they're gonna go, okay, you had a bad truck failure, that, it got those firefighters hurt. We know that apparatus is over twenty-five, N F P A, it's recommended for retirement at twenty-five. So what you're doing, calling it here, is liability, it's gonna get kicked back onto the city department. I've seen this where anytime, now it shows a report and they say that a city or a department knew something was wrong and didn't fix it, or responsible or something. And so that's kinda where I'm at as a fire chief, is I don't really feel comfortable with the liability of the twenty-five year engine and committing my guys to fire it. If it fails, instant M L will pay for their injuries, or worse, their debt. And so, on the B, I'm, I'm, I'm scared to take a lot of those, you know, if we try to fire a twenty-five year engine. As far as ISO, what I'm proposing is I'm gonna take that truck out of service because it has been five years. So what's gonna happen is if we take it out of service, when we do a survey of the ISO, we are going to lose credit for that engine and you will go down. Now, we go down to seven, I don't know, we go down to eight, I don't know. The only way to really know is a recommended due survey. Once the survey's done, it's gone. And so that's kinda where we're at. I, I really, I really recommend to y'all that if we take that fire truck out of service, regardless of what we do, just to take the liability off of using that truck that's over the N F P A requirements. Uh, you know, as far as what we do, that's kind of what we call, we put it forward, but as far as ISO, we lose that truck, we lose credit. And it is our only engine, that's all. As far as the fire insurance, we had a pretty deferred payment to start because I had to build the truck, park the clothes. With this one, we start paying, if we take the ten years, because that's as far as we're doing, we start paying forty-eight thousand dollars this year. So as of right now, so if you look at the community police partners, I got it printed out for you, it's got two gears. It says first leg, it's through March first. Obviously, that's not gonna be March. It's gonna be a little bit further back just because this, this club is, uh, it's almost a month old now. So that is gonna be one of the downsides, is if you bought new, you're gonna push that thing off a year. If you're about to use one, you're pretty much, if you're gonna have, you're gonna be twenty-six. Uh, and unfortunately, you go out ten years, it's safe for us per year. Uh, the original truck that I, that I proposed was a hundred and nine thousand dollars a year for a ten year payment. This is forty-eight, so I know it's a really huge shock, you know, I completely understand it. But I'm not, I'm not, I'm not open after the ten year payment, so.
On the I O S, um, do you know if every insurance company, I mean?
So it does predict, uh, some, some, so, so far from here, they all look at it a little bit different. Some of them go by, they clearly add the past five years. Some of them go directly off the way, each insurance company does it differently. But they all kinda fall back pulling that ISO weight. Now, how they step right from there, all of them do it a little differently. But it's, you know, it's that, I can't really say each individual company does it this way.
Yeah, um, my personal one does, they say they don't use an ISO, um, I, and I was trying to get more info. I was trying to educate myself, um, I didn't get very far with that.
It is, it's hard to get information.
Exactly.
My problem, I've been really interested in some of my information today, but a lot of it is gray. Um, you know, the whole thirty year, well, more or less thirty to twenty-five, or they follow after, it's in the N F P A. Various, which is one company that does ISO, Texas.
So I spoke to an agent from Farm Bureau and he said they didn't care how old it was, as long as you had a fire department. That's where your rates came from, was whether or not, because we are so, I, I can't say the word, the R U R L.
Rule.
Rule. I can't say that word.
Country.
Country, yes, thank you.
And it's, like I said, it's each individual company can look at it differently, but we get calls all the time. Hey, this person's wanting to treat this place, watch your ISO rate. Um, I think Adam, Adam's assistant here, by the way, you know, he's, I, I heard of the person that stuff. You know, we, you get those calls, those companies do what we know. Right now, like I said, we're sitting at six. If we lose this engine, which, again, I don't feel comfortable keeping it in charge between guys five, five. If we lose this and we go to the seven, seven, we're racing to the door.
Let me, let me ask, uh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
In last month, we approved for you guys to get, um, an additional fifteen thousand dollars or so for the doors. This first year, what could you guys give up for that forty-eight thousand dollar payment? I think this year is our, it's kind of our kick in the gut. Could you do without the doors? Could you do without something? Could you do that part of your budget from the city to help us find forty-eight thousand dollars? And I'm not saying all of it, I'm not trying to put you on the spot, but.
You know, if it come down to it, I, I can, I go and say, yes, I definitely go to my office and make a decision. I feel comfortable if you said, hey, let's hold off on the doors this year. You know, that, that could definitely, and of course, that's really, uh, it's gonna take it to thirty-three if you were to do this one. You know, I, I think there's a deal that could be made there.
I, I, I appreciate what you do and I, when you talk about, um, an engine failing in, in the midst of a fire and somebody getting hurt, that's, it kinda hits home with me. I mean, I, a lot of your guys over there, friends of mine, I grew up with some of those kids, or my kids did. And, um, I would really hate it if something happened, and I understand the age of the truck, but those things can happen more frequently. Um, but, you know, still three hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars that we don't have. So, um, I would love to find a way to find forty-eight thousand dollars to make a payment, um, this, this year. I just don't know, I don't know how many else feels.
That's my major concern. My question to the council, we don't have that bucket for this year's budget.
Well, that's what I'm trying to find.
Yeah, exactly.
So, this, this may be a completely ignorant question, but it's because I'm ignorant to it. You said that if it failed, it would fall back on the city? How does it fall back on the city if you're not paid, a paid fire department?
Even though you're not paid, you still fall under N F P A, if that makes sense. It doesn't, you don't have to be paid to fall under the National Fire Department. They are, they're, they're the government, it doesn't matter if paid, it doesn't matter if you're combination, it doesn't matter if you're. They set standards on our bunker gear, they set standards on our fire loads. Kinda how they fight fire, they, even though not paid, they still set the standards. We still have to fall under it because, like I was saying, if we do something that N F P A circles says don't do, or even if they just directly not do it, they still set the standard, so we still gotta pay the penalty for that.
How much time do we have to make this decision before they sell it?
Um, I don't know, I, I know we already have a meeting about it, but I don't have that.
I know we have a workshop coming up and I just don't know if y'all can hold off for that long, but, um.
I can stall it as long as I can. Like I said, he's a, he's a good friend of mine and Adam, and I go to him a lot too. Um, I can't hear his teeth and things.
So really, if, if we're looking, or what we're looking at for three hundred and seventy-five thousand, which is, uh, payments of forty-eight, three five five, is that?
Yes.
That's one.
For ten years.
And for ten years, and the first payment is due March first, twenty-six, twenty-six.
It says March first, it's gonna be later than that. Uh, and that's something that I can ask him about as well, is, you know, when we leave that first thing, I said this something I can give back to you more. If I can push it, you know, next budget, that would help as well, prevent this failure.
God, it might be, it might be helpful if, if you were to look at your budget and see if there's anything that you could kick in. The, the doors might be one of the options, and I don't know at this point whether, how the council even feels about.
Believe me, we had this as well.
More.
We not take that truck off service, you know, that, that was a hundred percent bottom two when you're open, nineteen ninety-seven, six. It's ninety-seven, it's bottom two. That truck is, although it's aged out, it's still in great shape. And so, I don't know, I'm sure you have to go through this or maybe an auction, but that's gonna be something that you're gonna be able to sell. And, I don't know, I don't know, that's gonna be something that you can forward back to. Uh, it's funny, cause I gotta text while we're in this meeting right now, I, I guess somebody is buying right now. And I know the process can't be sold out, but.
You have to do once a month.
Do it one.
Do it four.
If, I, I'm seeing those trucks going, that depending on, you know, some factors, he was at thirty to fifty thousand dollar rating right now, all day long.
But if it's valuable to that department, why is it not valuable to ours?
Because we care about our ISO rating, and we care about the N F P A, and some departments do not. So the market box telephone, I rang off, and I, and I have scenes, and I have to follow us, if they're seeing. Now, if something happens, it's showing that scrutiny of the N F P A codes without ever, you know, some departments have to do what they have to do. They're not preventing people from fighting, I've got eleven night firefighters, I mean, we, we fight firemen inside out, whereas most departments don't. And that has, that has a big factor.
What's the, what's the pleasure? Any other questions that come in, sir, what's the pleasure of the council at this point?
Now, I was pointing at the four ninety-six for the fast, what we call fast four. We call it mini one. That's a new class, so that's a new deal. That's, that's a truck that's not going anywhere. It's gonna be, it's gonna go through that same process of, we'll get mine. We have five, it has to be built. And so your payment on that would be preferred. Now, I'm not saying I would rather have it over this one, but I'm just giving you something. Uh, you all, that, I probably would like to remind you, I think everybody goes out in the six month range. I'm right, I'm right, I have a thick production of that four. That's for about six month production, I'm actually looking at, you know, the rough date looks pretty rough, maybe two more. Again, I didn't find any info on that, but it would be hard to do, just in case we wanted.
What's your thing?
I do appreciate the options. I don't know, maybe we could drive some money before, sit by you. Talking about the money there, but we did, that's bigger here than that. Uh, I mean, it's up to y'all, if you wanted to add any more to your workshop and try to talk about some more. Do you have any margin?
I mean, I, I would, I don't have a problem talking about it more, um, I really don't. I would love to find forty-eight thousand dollars, I don't know if we can. Um, I think, knowing that it's gonna be there next year too, um, but I do wanna grasp it.
Wouldn't you see if you could give us some, buy us some time, with, you know, before he puts it up for sale? That's a good, and that'll give us a little bit more time to, to, that's good.
And, and, and come up with some other ideas about money.
I need fifty dollars.
That would be good to start with.
May, maybe find out if, if, um, if they can push that first payment out somehow, or I, I don't, to the next budget year, I don't know. Just an option, I.
That truck is something that they probably have services, getting the money, so. So, again, do we have to go through an auction process on that? Do we have to take bids? Can we sell out, I mean, most of it?
Paul Freezer, you can do it any way you want to, just gotta make sure you get some sort of fair market value for it. Can't, can't, can't buy it for a dollar.
I can, again, I've got buyer ready right now. It's something I can talk to him, see if he's willing to, but I'm just. That was the problem with that first payment.
Well, and there's no doubt that the members of the council appreciate the fire department. And it's an important part of the city, and we really appreciate the work you do. Uh, and would be an easy thing if we didn't have a real time budget we're struggling with. So what, what is your pleasure? Do you wanna take the word of motion? Do you have a motion?
I'll write that motion.
Have a motion, Mr. Smith, to take the workshop, look at the options we have, and whether we can come up with money. Second, Mr. Massey, all of us in the paper, motion carries, move that, I will adjourn us.
Not a bad.
We got that to give.
Not a bad.
Not a bad.
Well.
We're not, we're taking it.
We pulled that from the agenda.
Yes.
Well.